Now we're on.
Now we're on.
Okay, so a call to order the work session for the important Commerce Advisory Board. You do not need to do the pledge today for the work sessions. In lieu of that, I just mentioned that we do have three flags behind us to honor the city, the state, and the federal flags. Roll call?
Roll call. Scudder?
Here.
Atwood?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Jaffa?
Here.
Paquette?
Yes.
Miller?
Here.
And Wilpers will not be here today.
That'd be excused.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, everybody, for coming. The weather's starting to get a little bit dicey. We have, obviously, a work session scheduled that showed a lot of open spaces. And based on our last regular meeting, we decided that we would fill in today's space with a services and business category to get the discussion started. We do not have, except, I think, for the city council, Chamber of Commerce handout, I think that's where this came from, we don't have anything to work with. So I'm really so glad that Samantha was able to bring us to it. And I would invite her, without objection, to lead us into this. Tell us a little bit about the history of it.
Should I come up or?
Which, how loud do you want to talk?
Yeah, thanks for taking a chance to review this with us. Per our conversation at the last PACAB meeting, Melissa and I sort of decided that we would put together a survey to identify and define critical services and businesses as they relate to the city of Seward. So I put out a survey. We used Facebook to disseminate it, shared it. What I want to preface the results with is that it's 23 online entries, and that it's not representative, you know, of all of Seward's voice by any means. It's also not the chamber's point of view, but it's just an aggregate of 23 people's voices. So you can see that there's quite a bit of content. I wanted to give you everything, but I'll just sort of highlight some of the key pieces that I got from each section. So the first question on the survey was, in a few words, please identify what a critical business or service is. So some of the ones that stuck out the most to me was, a business is critical when it provides services that are necessary to the community at large. A business that provides what people and other businesses in Seward need in urgent or semi-urgent capacity. Things necessary to live in Seward year-round. Businesses that every town needs to thrive and grow. And then, one of the ones that stuck out the most to me, because our town is so tight-knit, this means that nearly every business can be viewed as critical. Entities such as the Chamber create social events that contribute to community morale. So those were the big ones from that first question. Now, moving on to the second page, where we asked, please provide examples of critical services that you have seen leave the community. And then, the third question is, businesses that you would like to see return. So most of the answers for number three were, please see above. So anyway, some of the most answered critical businesses or services that we have seen leave is a building supply, a plumbing store, childcare services, healthcare services, especially women's specialty health, and veterinarian services. Autobody and mechanics. And then, finally, entertainment services, the bowling alley and the movie theater, namely. So I'll move over to number three, which, again, as I said, a lot of the responses to that were what people have seen leave is what they would like to see come back. But I highlighted that first bulletin where this person gave us a lot of content. They said that they think the answer is bigger than this question. What businesses or services do we need to be able to viably support the return? What businesses or services do we need in order to see some businesses come back? He says, you know, as quality of life goes up and everything comes back. I thought that first bullet was pretty insightful. So then, finally, our last question, is there any feedback you'd like to share with the Chamber and PACAB? And again, there's quite a lot there. One of the big takeaways was, again, that person that answered the question that I highlighted before wrote in another quite long one, and what I got out of that one was that we need our businesses to be invested in our community. We need partners. We need people who are invested in order to stay, in order to fight to stay. So, again, there's a lot of content in here that I, you know, take as you do, but happy to sort of get a little bit of feedback from our community. It's not, again, representative of the whole. It's not representative necessarily of our voice either, but it's a good starting point. So that's what I developed, and that's what I gotta say.
Let's start. What was the period of time that you solicited this 23 court response?
It went out November 2nd, and I compiled all the answers this morning into this document.
Two weeks, less than two weeks.
Yep. And it also hasn't been disseminated super widely. We used it on, we put it on Facebook, but we didn't put it in the newspaper, so.
So you think these are mostly lawful responses?
Yes.
I know when we did some surveys, it was always important to understand who was responding. And here, we're talking about, obviously, people within the community that have a, that are bought in, that have a buy-in. This is great, Samantha. And I'll go back around. Linda, did you have?
Questions? No.
One of the things that I came to this meeting this morning wondering about was, how would we define critical services? And critical services, we're talking about businesses essentially, wouldn't, I don't think anybody's expecting the city government, or the state government, or borough to step in and create any of these things. We're looking for private enterprise. I assume that's what we're mostly thinking about. Would that be a fair assumption to the board? I did have a chance to talk to the mayor, and she and I both remember the bowling alley and the theater, and we both missed both of them. You know, the bowling alley brought a real opportunity for families to get together and do things, and they still had a bar there, if I remember, so you could, it was an interesting connection. I'm not sure how we'll address these. Some of these issues are clearly, you know, except for the rec center, I think there was a, someone drive where the rec center was going to try to provide a lot of these opportunities and services under an interesting business model. I do think the Chamber is critical to this, you know, but how can, how would you think that PACAB can help with either publicizing, or reviewing, or accumulating additional information? Do you see some sort of synergy between the city, the Chamber, other groups?
Well, I think, you know, being such a tight-knit community, that it's necessary that we all kind of work together. And that's sort of what we're here to figure out, is how we can collaborate in order to promote this. One of the biggest points I found out of here was that note that the Chamber can create events and create programs to help the quality of life. I think that's something we're really good at right now, is creating community events to bolster that year-round life for people here. And by having fun things to do, having enrichment in a community will inspire people to become more invested and committed to its community, and want to stay, if they have reasons to, beyond just making money and, you know, living and breathing. So I think that's a strong role that we can play in this part, is creating, is helping create a fun and vibrant and lively year-round community, which will hopefully, you know, incentivize businesses to stay around. And another point that I want to make is that a lot of these things that used to be here, the movie theater, the bowling alley, autobody shops, some of them are still in place, but just, they look different than they used to. Like, we don't have the movie theater, but we have the movie series. We don't have the bowling alley, but we have a really strong Parks and Rec right now that's providing skate night and puzzle night. You know, there are still these opportunities, they just look a little different than they used to.
All right, I would agree with you. I think there are, amongst the cities in Alaska, particularly small towns, I mean, I wouldn't talk the Fairbanks, or Juneau, or Anchorage, but the small towns, Seward still maintains a very friendly and community environment. Even though there are empty houses and people bailing in the winter, there's still a strong community here. So, not as strong, I remember downtown where there are 13 bars and 13 churches, and, you know, downtown was always busy. But you can go places, you can go downtown, these years, and hardly anybody there. Fortunately, stores like Urbax and a few others, the computer shop, are open year-round. Some of the downtown restaurants. I don't know. Yeah. Apollo's open year-round. I wonder, I wonder if a lot of this has a hinge, if there's something or roadblock. I took a course with Jim Lincoln, the founder of Lincoln Electric, once, and he said, you find the log jam, and then there's a flow again, and then there's another log jam, you attack that. When I look at these comments over and over, and I just start circling housing in here, and it comes up over and over and over and up, I realize planning and zoning, and I've looked at their recent work, they're spending a lot of time with this issue, but it's not enough. And it comes up with, if somebody wants to come to Seward, okay, well, maybe I can hunker down for the winter, but I'd like a nice place to live. This is one of the things, a couple of years ago, when we started talking about housing, and I never got around to talking to the banks. We had solicited some comments from the financial people and others. I did get Jenna and Nicole to speak. There's a way out of this mess. We're not alone in this, but we have some advantages here in Seward, because we have the jobs. So this is one of these catch-22 things between, you know, quality of life has reasons to attract families, but without the housing, you're not going to get them.
Yeah, it's a compounding issue, right? It's not just one solution that we can pinpoint and say, this is what's wrong, we need to fix this. It's layered.
So we have to take two things on at once?
Or three.
Or three. Linda?
You know, I still don't really know how the whole process works, or everything. You know, I got on the PACAB, and I was pretty honest, I was like, I don't know how I can help, I'm just gonna sit back and watch for a while. And I'm still probably just gonna do that, for the most part. But one of the reasons I got involved with this is because I have grown up here, I've seen Liberty Theater, Dream Land Bowl, all these things, you know, the teen center, the ferry dock, like, all this stuff. And then I left for a long time, and I traveled all over the place. And I, you know, traveled around the United States, and I worked for the Antarctic Program, and the icebreakers that I worked on went all around the world. They didn't just stay around Antarctica. So I've seen all these, like, little port towns, I've seen all these places, and I've seen the Midwest, that has, you know, farming is their big thing, like, a whole town whose entire livelihood depends on one economic thing. And Seward, you know, we're seeing the shipyard come in, and they're getting, it's being run well, and it's bringing in more and more, like, government contracts, and Navy, and Coast Guard, and stuff like that. And I worked on the junior for Anderson's tug and barge in its last few years, and we'd have, like, the big coal ships come in, and we'd have one big tug and the junior, and it could get any coal ship in here in the wintertime, you know, just fine. And I've got friends that work for Cook and Letoing up in Anchorage, and they're always posting these things on Facebook about the Port of Anchorage, and they'll have, like, three or four tugs on these same boats going in there. And one thing that I started to realize after all of this is that the Port of Anchorage is awful, especially in the winter. It's awful. Like, and we have a year-round port connected to the railroad, right here, deep, protected. When we do get rough weather, it's straight from the north, which, if you're ever parking a heavy boat that's loaded with stuff, it's kind of nice to have a headwind, you know, like, there's a lot of, like, things that help us. And it seems to me that our hard times are in the winter. In the winter, there is plenty of housing. These shipyards keep opening up, we get more and more shipyards. Now, we've got Catalyst, we had Rainbow, we've got this one running well now, Sockeye Point, like, there's more and more of this. The boats are coming here in the winter, and we're getting more and more capable. And it seems like there's a way to link all of these things. Like, we got a lot of housing in the wintertime, we have industry coming in the wintertime, we have a port that's awful in the wintertime, but here, we're sitting, you know, and they are building new neighborhoods, you know, up, like, around Orway and stuff like that. Like, supply and demand is kind of kicking in, it takes a little bit of time, you know, but all of these things, I think, making, you know, the infrastructure and, you know, there's no reason, like, all the building stuff. Like, if you want to build, you gotta have materials to build. Now, we have to go to Kenai or Anchorage to build, but we've got this huge port and this opportunity to, like, warehouse and stock stuff for the rest of Alaska in the wintertime, connected to, like, great transportation. And, you know, I don't know how the whole process works, but it seems to me that there's a lot of these things that obviously complement each other that are linked. And how do we link them, and how do we make it friendly and easy for businesses to come in here, like, for Spinards to come in here and be like, oh, you'll give me a bunch of land to warehouse stuff, so I can, like, slowly ship it to Anchorage, instead of waiting for the ice to clear in Anchorage, you know, and things like this. And just to foster a really, like, business-friendly thing, because my business operates out of Seward, and I've had plenty of opportunities to, like, open offices in Seward. And maybe it's my experiences and the handful of people that I talk in depth with, but some people say that it's hard to do business in Seward. Like, it doesn't, it's not a very, like, friendly community to, like, open a business, to start something, to renovate a historic building, to, like, do all these things, you know, to, like, and I don't know, you know, and that's kind of why I'm here, and why, you know, I probably should be sitting out there for, like, a dozen meetings before I sit here. But, like, I think that there's all these things that actually, like, complement each other, and that if they can be linked, and they gotta be linked through, you know, if business is gonna come in, they're gonna want to feel secure, they're gonna want to feel, like, welcome. They're not gonna want to feel like, okay, what's the next roadblock? What's the next roadblock? Because even in a friendly environment, it's hard to do business, and it's hard to grow a business and open a business, you know. I can't imagine, I took over my family's business of 32 years, and I ran it for the last 10 years, nine years, and knowing what I've learned the hard way through taking a successful business and making it what it is, I can't imagine opening up, you know, something new, you know, without, like, a lot of, like, things going your way. And so, I just, I see a lot of the problems, but I see, like, a lot of the problems, like, there's similar things that help, that complement, you know, like, we're dead in the winter, but the whole state of Alaska needs resources and supplies in the winter. We do have a lot of land, a lot of people are like, where would you grow and stuff? It's like, there's a lot of places to grow, but we've still got a lot, a lot of area, you know, and it's kind of just finding the way to link that between the Chamber of Commerce, the harbor, or, like, you know, planning and zoning and stuff like that. But I think that a lot of the vacuums that are created because of winter and everything can be, like, largely filled with Seward and this port, you know, in particular. This is an amazing port, like, it's beautiful, and it's the only one like it in Alaska. So, I don't know, I ranted a little bit there, but.
No, not at all. What particular things did you hear were obstacles or problems for people starting businesses?
You know, it's been a while. Some friends opened up Sea Bean, like, a long time ago, and they used to actually be employees of Miller's Landing. They started coming up here and working on charter boats, and just, you know, the, just dealing with, like, the utilities, and, like, you know, what they're allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do, and stuff like that, and just navigating that. A lot of it is, actually, isn't that it's, like, it's that they thought that they would be, like, they'd have everything lined out, and then they'd be in the middle of something, and somebody'd be like, hey, stop everything, hold up, another $10,000, you know, but I don't know the details on it, but I just, I do know that, generally speaking, it's scary.
Would you say, would you say the scariness is because of the newness of dealing with any agency, or is it common to other cities? You mentioned the experience in other places.
My experience in other places is generally, like, hanging out for a week or two here or there, through, you know, Everywhere USA, Midwest, you know, and seeing a thriving little town with community things, and realizing that they have, like, one economy, you know, and only partially in that, you know, like, these little farming towns and stuff like that. And, you know, honestly, maybe that's a pretty uneducated, like, observation. Maybe I'm not seeing.
Well, I think it is. Merrick, for sure. Linda?
I could speak to that just briefly, but I think that it's changed with time. I know when I first started to try and build my business, every time I went in to the electric department to talk about getting electricity to my property, I would leave in tears. There were so many obstacles, there was so much I didn't understand about what I was being told. So I can relate to the difficulty of starting a business. I don't know that that's the biggest thing, but I have heard conversations, for example, about building codes, and how perhaps building codes have become so restrictive that they are actually preventing people from being able to build things, because they're, it makes it so cost prohibitive. I want to come back to another point of view, though. I think one of the most critical pieces of business infrastructure that we lost in this town is the builder's supply. And I don't know, I don't know what we can do to get a new builder's supply here, but I really see that that one piece is a really pivotal piece to be able to grow Seward. It has become so difficult to do, and, I mean, we're just doing a small remodel on our house, and it's a frickin' nightmare, because you go to town and they don't, and now you have to jerry-rig and retrofit and try and figure out what the pieces and the parts that you have, or you have to get in the car and drive two, two and a half, three hours on what would now be very crappy roads, to try and get a plumbing part that you need. So I really am curious how Seward can go about trying to replace that one critical business.
Okay. I have somebody in the audience that may have some input on that?
I was gonna touch on that, too. Go ahead.
Yeah, Becky, please.
Becky Dunn, Inside the City. This is why I've brought up before, the state of Alaska and the Kenai Peninsula Borough has a list of businesses right on their website. I think the city of Seward should do that, because they haircut, you go, where can I get a haircut? You could look it up and find out. And I have been carrying lumber. I carry one-by-twos, two-by-fours, two-by-sixes, four-by-fours, four-by-sixes, beams, and some of those pressure-treated, et cetera. It's not by any means what Spinard Builders was doing, but still, it's an effort. There needs to be a way to get word out on what we have. The Chamber does an excellent job of promoting tourists and tourist industry and visit Seward, an excellent job. But we need somebody to pick up the ball on businesses, and we're always concentrating on new businesses. What about supporting some of the existing ones? That always seems to be lacking, too. So we do have a local vet. She doesn't do spade and neuters, she doesn't do, she doesn't put animals down, but she's good for vaccinations and advice, and so that's a start. And I do sell vaccinations and emergency supplies and things, but, so, we do have, I mean, so we do have a lot of things that aren't, so what we do have for the pet field is, we do have pet store, feed store, we have people that walk dogs, we have doggy daycares, we have dog boarding, we have dog training. So we do have an awesome animal shelter now, that has been a huge improvement, huge improvement. It's also getting, employees is tough right now, but I just thought, for now, that I would touch bases on that. And I'm doing a morning show now at 7:30, and do make a lot of announcements on things that are going on, and that's one thing that I missed before, back when CareXA was going full force. The community service there, we need to kind of work together. And that would also, it seems to be there's kind of been a selective enforcement, too, with the city of Seward. When I opened up my BMB in town, I received more than weekly calls, and it was kind of confusing in how to start. Do you get your state business license, you're registered, pay Kenai Peninsula Borough sales tax, registered with the city business license, and then you have to get inspected? But, but it was confusing on what order to do that in. So as far as for starting a new business, that was kind of confusing to me. And, but yet, I'm watching all these, at the time, all these BRBOs, including one that was on city council, previous bookings, recommendations, future bookings, no business license. That would also help with the compliance, listing businesses on the Seward website, because you could, you would know if they're compliant or not. So I have more, but I left it where I wrote it.
Would you take some questions?
Yes.
Well, simple one. What are the lengths of those lumber? You mentioned some dimension sizes, what lengths are you carrying?
Well, for right now, to be quite honest, what we're doing is just eight foot, except for the beams. We have some bigger beams. What I did is, I told people, hey, if you make a big pack, bid package, and you have extra lumber, bring it in, and I'll sell it for you. So it's not sitting in your garage, and so I have some beams, and they're gonna be longer than eight foot. But for right now, I call them redneck transport. It's not a new transport service in Seward, it's just, my kid, when he goes up to grab something, he puts them in the bed of the truck. So we're just buying stuff. What would you pay for up there? I do check with four or five different places, locate it first, and the best price, and bring it down. So it's more for people that need a dozen boards, or one or two, to finish a job. Yeah. You're not gonna.
Norman, something.
Yes, I just want to touch on one of some things that Mr. Miller said, so.
Stay there, if you would, Becky, too.
So SBS does come up here with three barges, pretty much three barges every year. I'm pretty sure Dwayne was gonna touch on that, too. And then, so also let you know that Pat Mars has purchased a piece of property at Monday council meeting, he's gonna be building the building across, he's gonna have a bunch of satellite offices, CAT's coming here, and some other places are gonna have a little satellite offices across. And then, there is a, the Chamber does put out a guide, it's a marine guide, mostly marine businesses, so that's out there. So that, there is businesses out there.
Who put that out?
The Chamber.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And also, the, if you have a big enough order, you can call SBS, they come over every week and deliver right to your house. So, yeah, I know it's not, you can't go get plumbing supplies, but, yeah. go get certain plumbing supplies, but yeah, I understand. So, but, and like I said, she's been carrying wood for a long time now. So, if you need just a couple pieces, you can go grab it there. She has it.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, when you're building a building, it's not just lumber. It's brackets. It's nails. It's, you know, it's art tech. Well, I mean, it's just, it's not just the lumber. And that's why we really need an actual lumber yard.
Jason?
Builder's supply.
I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. Just, I can't speak to everyone's experiences, but I know in the last two years, we've really tried to streamline and make getting a business license easier. And with short-term rentals, we're doing a much better job on compliance and regulations. And, but it is pretty easy now to get on OpenGov and to get your business license. And we do try and have it spelled out there more clearly. So, I do feel like we have made it easier on those fronts. And before the marine guide came out a few years ago, we had a kind of a marine working group that was meeting regularly to kind of discuss just different problems they're experiencing and how we could probably like work together to, I guess, to solve those problems and to create some efficiencies. And that was right after, of course, like SBS went out of business. There really is like a demand for kind of a, like a lumber store, but also like an LFS, like marine supply store at the same time. And so, kind of almost like, if you guys have been to Homer, kind of like a catchmat gear shed where they have, you know, like Seward's version of something like that, where you have like a lot of like marine industrial supplies. You could carry like a lot of zincs. You could carry things like that, that those marine groups also don't need to go like order out for. And also that lumber, that lumber piece because, I mean, I know, I'm talking with JAG, they use a lot of lumber and for constructions and putting their stuff together. And so, we do, in those discussions, we do know there's a demand. The tough thing I think that's happened is that we had these locations that were kind of set up perfectly for those that are now been repurposed. And so, I do think we need to look at like finding another place for that because there still is the demand. And then I think in some ways, you might want to find like a suitor or like go, go talk to someone like, that has that large corporate, like an LFS or like Triton, you know, someone like that that has that big thing and have them look at this. And because...
When you say talk to them, how do you mean talk to them?
I mean, just go call them up and say, hey, look, we feel like we have, we have a need in our community, and we like, would you be willing to just take a look at us? We feel like this is a demonstrated need. Here's all the things we have going on for the lumber, for marine supplies, and get people to chime in on that saying like, look, here's, because people were saying, and Mark at the time, Mark Clement said, hey, if you guys can get together and get like group ordering on, and zincs was kind of like the term that we use, but it really applies to lots of different things of like that boat, the people that work on boats, both like sport fish and commercial workboat stuff need. But he's like, we could easily, like, there's places we could stockpile that here, and we order it together. We can bring it up on barges. So, but I do, but I do think it makes sense to like, if you could court like a larger organization that has the capacity that's kind of operates in Alaska and in different industries to come take a look and say like, either I think there's an opportunity here that we'd like to, you know, talk to you about.
We'll come to Melissa and then to Samantha.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to say, number one, I'm so happy that we're having this conversation, and I think it could be something that could be talked about till we're all blue in the face and still look for solutions. And some great points made today with our port, with talking to other businesses and getting them to come to Seward. But I think for me, the biggest question is, how do we incentivize them to come here? What can we do to attract those businesses? Land, Tom mentioned, there's land available. There's a lot of city land. The city has a lot of land. Is there options for the city to maybe offer grants or offer some sort of incentive to lease or buy land from the city? Rental agreements, grants, breaks on utilities for the first year, something. I mean, I, these are just, you know, off the top of my head brainstorming ideas, but what can the city do? What can we all do to attract those businesses and keep them here? Yeah, I guess that's really all I had to say about that.
Yeah, so all those lines with it says like a tax rebate or extra.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I'll get to you, Wolf. Melissa or Samantha?
Yeah, this just speaks to a point that Becky and Jason sort of made about supporting businesses and it being, being hard to start a business in Seward. I think the Chamber does do support its businesses is host the Small Business Development Center. In our office, it's a free service for anybody running a business, starting a business, owning a business that can come in and get feedback and get step-by-steps how to do it. So, that is, that's a very supportive resource.
You have those kind of consulting services?
It's a free service in the office, a Small Business Development Center.
Is that generally known? I mean?
It's, I'm pretty, I mean, I'm in my bubble, but it's pretty widespread.
And I'll speak to that coming from my vantage point as a bank loan officer. That department has done wonders for people coming to me anyway, looking for lending, because she does offer those resources on how to qualify for lending. And I know Bruce, you brought up banking a couple of times since I've been on the board. You know, the banks are there to help, but what we need is the people to come ask for the help.
That's right.
You know, we can't, we can't go out there and make loans to people that aren't asking for them.
You can make sure that they know the open sign is there. Wolf?
I was just tagging along with what Melissa said about incentives for business to come here and to pick up, fill a vacuum. Like, as she was mentioning various things, I was thinking, sales tax, rebate back to the business for a few years, you know, to sweeten the pot, or property tax rebate, something. For those critical businesses that aren't tied into the current kind of monoculture, retail moniker, industrial moniker, which is, I mean, we basically have two businesses here. We have JAG, and we have their, well, we have some other businesses. Anyway, so, you know, some sort of special case as far as taxes go for a period in time to sweep, to attract.
I'd offer one real quick thing, and then I'd like to ask Becky about communication because a lot of this has to do with how well information is spread around. But I've started a number of businesses. I've been in every state. I've worked in most of them. I've started businesses in several. When I lived in Sitka in the early 1970s, I wanted to start a business, a welding business. I went to the local welding store to get oxygen settling bottles. He says, no way. He says, I'm not giving you the opportunity to compete with me. So, the workaround was to get them sent in from Petersburg, or I don't remember if Petersburg or Wrangell. But there's always a workaround. It's never easy. It's never easy. So, having the bank has been a great help for our company. We consider them a partner. And I think most of us here that knows First National Bank and other banks know them as a very, very valuable community member. Probably most of us have one time owed them money.
So, my question is, we need to incentivize, that's clear, but how do we solicit, right? I mean, call them up, that's fine. But I feel like the city has to be prepared with like a package. Like, we have to have, we have to have identified the land, and we have to identify the incentives before we call them up so that we can call them up and say, hey, we're in need of a builder's supply, builder slash marine supply, whatever you want to call it. And we have this, I don't know, five-acre parcel, and we're prepared to give you this kind of a break on lease or land or buy it or, you know, and this kind of a, then you go through your incentives. But I think the city has to identify and have a package to present. I don't think we can just call them up and go, hey, we need you. You want to come here? And, you know, we'll give you some incentives. But I think we have to get much more organized about it.
Becky, one of the things that occurs to me is when you have stuff for sale, connecting the buyer and the seller is always a critical part. And I don't know, I don't know what resource between the radio and the news letters and things that go out around town. How is any of that really up to date? How's any of that kept up to date?
Well, we, we're a not-for-profit radio station, so we do ads, a lot of ads, and we get paid for doing the ads, or we do a lot of public service announcements for free. We have several going on right now. But we can't really do shout-outs. Wolf can explain this better. But we will have our radios, our TV station that would be our own station that, remember, it was all I sold Christmas trees on when I had Christmas trees. That will be a way to do it, or the newspaper. And, and I would really like to see that on the, on a website where they list what businesses are in town, whether or not they paid their fee and are a member of the Chamber.
So, you do have some private advertising going on?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Because I remember being in Fairbanks and having local advertisers. They were local, created, very primitive and rustic kind of people selling the things you're talking about, lumber or brackets or whatever. But they were, and I'm not entirely sure this problem can't be solved or shouldn't be solved from right here.
Yeah.
Helping people that want to do a business get started and/or expand their business or something like that.
Yeah, I want to, I want to put more emphasis on they expand the businesses. Everybody's like, how do we get new businesses here? Why not work with the people we have? We've been over backwards for a new company that does shuttle service, property, loans, this, that, grants. But yet, the cab services here that pay sales tax year-round, who saves somebody from getting a DWI or in a wreck and goes, gets that drunk that is finger painting on the bar at night? That service is going to, we're really hurting cab services right now. So, we need, instead of how can local businesses support the community, how can the community support local businesses?
What do you mean by that?
I mean, how many times have I watched somebody walk through my door, go, I know you can't help me, but my Amazon order didn't come in? That type of stuff. There was a big fit when Amazon started charging sales tax or when we were pushing the online sales tax. But yet, when you have public service announcements or when you have a fundraiser for your kids' sports, whose doorstep are you on? Are you on Amazon's doorstep? No. You're on your local businesses. And usually, it's somebody that's never bought anything from me before. And I love to support the kids. I love to do the ads with kids, actually get them on the air because, anyway, that's just fun. But I just want to put, I want to say the community needs to support local businesses, too, or ask them first. Like, nobody has approached me from the city about what lumber I sell or what services I sell. And Not So Fast was, no one would remember this. It's Not So Fast because I was building commercial fishing gear and selling zincs and all kinds of things like that. I still have some stuff, not that much. I do have some hardware. I do have Joyce hangers. Not much, but I will go into the, and talk to them about expanding businesses because I've always got the impression it was more to push new businesses and tourist businesses.
Samantha, you don't have to be a member of Chamber to benefit from the services.
The Small Business Development Center, it's a free service to anybody in Seward.
And one of the things that, Becky, I think, sort of piggies along with, piggybacks along with this is that Catalyst Marine or Joe Tugus has picked up some of the stuff, mechanical pipe fittings and welding supplies that Ace Hardware did have. Before that, there were the Seward, what's Seward Chandelery? But he does now market some of that stuff. I'm in the business, and it was a surprise to me when I walked in there, the number of things that he has. And it's a specialty market. And you go into Mark's store, I think Mark is somewhat taxed with space. And all these things, you know, like Seward, the building supply, they had a huge inventory. And in business, this is a dilemma. You have to have a retail business, you have to have an inventory of stuff that may not move very quickly.
Yes.
But that one-off that somebody wants to come in there, you can make some money on it if you've got it.
Not only that, all that stuff does not come from one place. All that stuff does not come from one distributor. It does by no means magically appear on the shelf. It involves a lot of calls involving shipping, not just one leg of the journey, but several and several different distributors. I mean, just a real simple product, and then you throw COVID in there, and popular item, pig's ears. I had to call four distributors before I could get that. So, before, I would just go with the cheapest one. Now, I go with where I can get it. And it was more than I just sold it for to replace it.
So, is there, there's one other thing that would be an obstacle, and that would be from here to Anchorage, I forget. It's 90 miles from my house, so it must be about 140 or so from Seward. The cost of that trip versus the increased cost that you would pay a local vendor. Is there any credence to that, that people buy supplies here in Seward or paying way too much money for it?
There is in some cases. There was something just recently that I was glad to get, but I could have got it a lot cheaper online or if I would have picked it up in Anchorage. But I needed that product, and I needed it now. So, I was happy to get it. And, but if you're there already, a lot of times it's worth it picking it up. But there's a lot of stuff, like a lot of the dog food, you're fixed. You can sell it for, it's worth the same price on most of the dog, cat food, stuff like that. We're the same price. And you never know what somebody will have. I just bought a whole pallet of electrical stuff, plumbing stuff. I have stove pipes.
You know what all this stuff is?
Some of it. I have a little trouble inventorying the guitar strings because I know nothing about them. I have a special Pokemon person to do the Pokemon parts, but it's just stuff that isn't in Seward. So, and people in Seward are very, working together. Fish House and I send people back and forth all the time. We do, all the time. So, it never hurts to ask because like I was an expediter for years. And so, if I don't have it, I generally can find it for you in Seward if it's available. So, it never hurts to ask.
Look, we've talked quite a bit here about building supplies or just general supplies. Oh, I'm sorry, Dwayne, go ahead.
Yeah, we have. And I'm looking at this survey, these responses, and one of the things that I noticed is, and maybe the administration could answer this, the need for childcare. And I know there are some amount of childcare homes or, you know, taking care of needs in communities. Jason, do you know, is there currently a licensed center, childcare center in town?
No, it's pretty much, we, Hyper's the group that's kind of been working in the community in that. And there are, they have expanded some homes that do that, but there is not a childcare center. But they're in like the, I mean, if you dig into that one, they're kind of in the same boat as so many other industries are where like they can't get workers. They can't afford to pay them enough because then it doesn't make it to go, like it just puts your business upside down for the demand, for the training and all that other stuff. And so, because no one's going to work, you know, for certain, just rate increases across the board. It's like you can go get a much better paying job than doing that type of work.
Sure.
As far as if you look at salaries and cost per hour. And so, then you dig into that. It all comes back to housing to a certain degree.
Right, right. I'm thinking about, you know, these, we're having this broad conversation about perhaps how to benefit, you know, and attract businesses. But, you know, I think it kind of, it goes back to families. You need affordable housing and what other things do families need? They need childcare. And, yeah. And of course, when you start talking about housing, then you're talking about real estate, and you're talking about real estate. You're talking about utilities. I mean, you're just pulling this long thread, you know? Everything's, everything's connected to some, to some degree. But, yeah, when it comes to livability, I'm thinking childcare is one of those things. Anyway, that's just a comment.
I know that Hyper has been looking for people to, to get them all, get them going to do so many kids in your house. And so, they're asking for people to do that. And they'll get you, help you, help you go through the inspections, everything you need. And just another topic on childcare, we went to Juneau last year. We had meetings with a bunch of representatives. And we explained to them the reason why there's a lack of childcare all throughout Alaska is because of all the regulations you throw out there.
Bingo.
Yeah, they throw out so many regulations. They can go in your house and go through your drawers, go through any, any place in your house. And that's the regulation. That's why a lot of them shut down.
Was there something that motivated that? Was there something that motivated that?
I don't know. I don't know. I just know those regulations, Shirley Dickraff, she, how many kids, my kids went to her.
Yeah.
My kids' kids went to her and then they just, you know, she shut down because she didn't want them to stay.
Is there no childcare here in Seward?
No. Just some individual homes.
Individual homes.
A handful, not very many though.
There's three.
Yeah, so that, that's an excellent point. And it comes back to the regulations have made it so difficult that people can't do it. And so, I just want to throw this out as a mind shift because a lot of other places do it this way. Large employers have childcare that they provide to their employees. And so, I'm wondering if we don't need to encourage the large employers that we have here to belly up to the bar and start doing that as a way to help grow this community back. Because we've been spinning our wheels on childcare for at least five years. And it hasn't gotten any, it's actually really gotten worse. Yes, there are more little homes with a few kids, but it's not enough. And you don't have people coming and saying, I'll take a few kids because of the regulations that'll open your house up to all this personal invasion. So, that's another suggestion I would make is that somehow we start working with the large employers to start solving that problem.
Samantha, then Wolf.
Before, we touched on incentive programs to have people come and build their business, build their services. That's what Hyper did with their childcare program. They offered, I think it was a $7,000 startup and help.
But, they still are.
They still are, you know? So, and I believe that's been taken advantage of by at least one. But, like I talked to a childcare provider who couldn't find an affordable, she wanted to be a childcare provider but couldn't find affordable space.
Right.
That was her obstacle. So, like, these incentive programs do work.
Wolf, I was just going to say, I still don't understand what happened with the old Baptist church. Several hundred thousand dollars was spent on turning that into a childcare center, including public money. It was never, there's no force to pull it forward. I don't know what happened there. They just, somebody just pulled the plug. It seemed like it was just.
It was crushed, man, too.
It sold.
What?
It sold, I guess.
Yeah, but after they decided not to. Well, there were some problems with their business and then it became dormant and then it sold. I mean, but things like that, you know, it seems like there should be some oversight so that things like that don't happen.
So, I, I'm sorry. I just kind of want to comment on that. That's really two businesses in Seward that have shut down for employee housing.
Right.
And employee housing is super important. We need it, obviously. But, that's two businesses that we have lost. And it didn't shut down for employee housing. I mean, that's not, that's not a correct statement on the daycare facility. The daycare facility shut down. And as I understand it, Hyper did try to get that facility and turn it into a daycare at one point. I don't know why it didn't happen, but because it didn't happen, it's now employee housing. And then, of course, Ace Hardware, when the owner passed away, the family decided to sell the business and for whatever reason, it wasn't bought by somebody who wanted to open a hardware store, which was very detrimental. And now, it's an employee housing. My husband's a contractor, he's a small contractor, he's a one-man show, but he's a contractor. And several jobs that he had this summer, and going back to the building supply thing again, we had to leave town every weekend to go buy paint or go buy lumber. And not to say that there's not lumber at your store, Becky, but there's also other things that we need, you know? So, and of course, there's an incentive just to get out of town in the summer. But, I guess back to my point, that is two businesses. So, we solved one problem by creating another problem or we, but that's what happened is, you know.
Right. So, employers are now providing, I mean, more employers than before are now providing employee housing.
Which is needed.
Which is needed. And that, that's another one of those fixes, right? Like, they need to provide childcare, they need to provide housing, but it still leaves us in a big void.
Well, there was a, there were historic in this town where you had railroad workers that came in and lived on a railroad train when they did work in town. You had shipyard people that came in and lived in tents along the side of the fish plant, places like that. So, employers have provided housing for employees for years. The hospital provided housing for people. But, there's been a growth in businesses in Seward in the last 20 years, a huge growth without, and removing a few of those homes through the Verbo or B&amp;B business has impacted it. And there hasn't been a transition into other affordable housing, whatever that means.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, Ben.
So, that, the employee housing situation and if you look at the businesses that have taken off in this town, the demographic, it's great that we're bringing that sort of, you know, revenue and productivity and making those jobs. But, the shipyard jobs, the tour jobs, the restaurant jobs, these are all seasonal, these are people that are willing to live in employee housing, they're willing to couch serve. But, what are they not doing is they're not starting families and setting up parks here.
Right, right. They're not becoming permanent residents.
When I came to town 12 years ago, I was able to come in and buy a house, there's no way I could do that today. This, it is not possible.
Cost basis?
As, as, you know, earning a fair salary, it would not be possible to move to Seward and live here. And that's, that's the bottom line. I mean, we can have employee housing forever and close up shop in the winter. That's kind of what we're stuck with unless we come up with a solution. So, the question.
Well, the cost, the cost of things versus your revenue, I mean, there, there's been a balance. And I think, I guess like national and state trends, we're somewhat in a balance, but it's tough for everybody. So, we're, which one of these targets that are, that are blocking this can we attack?
I think that it's building and houses, you know? And then we, you know, we have a port here where everything could be coming through it. Everything that goes to the entire state of Alaska could be because we have the best port. And if you start with that, because, you know, everybody, I have a hard time finding contractors. I mean, I built stuff via YouTube myself. A lot of times, I'd be happy to have a contractor, you know, but I can't find one. I think that the port and the building and the land that can be used that are like part of this, to link those and to find, you know, to do like Linda said, like, be like, hey, let's like, let's set this package up and then call Lowe's and be like, hey, Lowe's, you have a store here, a store here, a store there, a store there, they're all connected to the railroad. Seward is easy to get in, you need like, you know, it's not the port of Anchorage in the wintertime. And make like a staging area or warehouse space where, yeah, everything comes here and then it goes to these spots to make us more of a proper port hub, you know, an economic like thing. And then, if you have the building supplies and there's a bunch of problems in housing, you know, and you incentivize like contractors and stuff to come here and be like, hey, we'll help you, we'll, you know, cut this off, you know, make it a thousand dollar like tax break or whatever, whatever, you know, I don't. But, I think that the port and the building supplies and the housing are all like a problem that's, that potentially can like complement each other, you know, solve each other. And the rest of those, like, if you have affordable housing, all the other stuff, stuff opens up, all of them.
I have a question for Norm. I know you got your hand up, but what is the status for city-owned upland?
So, we have a lot, it's actually not very expensive to lease. It's not. We have a lot on the other side that somebody's leasing now and then somebody's going to be expanding. And the city has some land inside, inside the city. There's several places inside that the city could, you know, bring before council. The council's the one that has to, you know, do land disposition, so. But, just want to touch on the thing Mr. Mill's been saying about shipping. So, I've gone to four, five maybe meetings with Toad, I mean, Dwayne can touch on it too, that they want to come to Seward because they think their dock's going to fail in Anchorage. So, they were talking about bringing a boat to Seward for a trial run and offloading at the, at the railroad dock and then doing a Kenai Peninsula freight run, starting there.
Wow.
They have the lay-down yard and they're building more, there's going to be more lay-down yard coming. But, Toad has come to us, when I was acting city manager several times, we've gone to, we've gone to Anchorage and met with them and seen how the shipping works. They took us up there and they showed us all that stuff. So, Toad is interested in Seward. So, that's a start.
Yeah, connecting people with Becky with like, you know.
Because they're on a 10-year schedule and they think their dock is going to fail within five. That was that, that area, that new area there, that's what they told us, so.
The Anchorage port takes like massive amounts of work just to keep going and even then.
Well, they got the red zone, they're always.
Well, they're always going back to do it. I mean, it's the hugest tides in the world.
But, I think that, you know, but that's going to bring more jobs, more, you know, teamsters for the trucks.
Potential jobs.
Potential, thank you.
Wolf, and then Melissa, I think.
I was just going to say that this housing situation is not a Seward issue. It's, the housing market is broken nationwide, not worldwide. And whatever you, if you're going to get ahead of this, you're going to have to come up, it's going to have to be some, it's going to have to be some serious thinking, it's going to have to be different. You're letting the marketplace take care of it, it's not going to.
Wolf, I had a question for Jason. When was the last time that you know that we had any HUD housing in Seward?
I mean.
Bayside, I think, was HUD housing.
Yeah, I know we have HUD housing outside city limits.
Yes.
But.
There is HUD housing outside city limits?
Yeah.
Just one thing about the housing situation too. There's been a lot of work being, there is a lot of work being done with Chief Bracken and Peter Michicki on developing neighborhoods outside north of town here. And they would be excellent people to talk to about the efforts they made, city act they made.
Those are mostly single-family dream houses where.
Well, yeah, it's like, it's like this new subdivision up top. I mean, you know, we've got Coast Guard coming to town, how many people are going to be able to afford that? You know, we've got, we've got jobs, we've got a $60,000 a year scientist job at, it's the CLR Center being advertised right now.
$60,000?
And $60,000 is not, well, you can't.
So, we've talked with, we've been in talks like for two years with like the borough, the land managers there. And they are looking at, like, there's some borough property off of Exoclasure Road that they're looking at releasing at some point in time. It's going to be after they fix the Box Canyon Levy, finally. So, there's about 20 acres out there that they're looking at getting out there. We've talked to them about, there's in the old mill subdivision, there's forest service land that's already like plotted out there. And so, we've gone through and identified land outside of city limits. There's some possibilities of like the borough and like DNR, the state swapping some properties to make some more accessible. So, we, we are in, we've been in talks pretty regularly with developing outside of city limits for residential property. But, it's like whatever you develop, you figure you're probably going to lose maybe half of. And when I say lose, it's you have people that are, can just buy it as a second home, those types of things. But, like, you still need to speculate even if you can get 50% of it because it's, we just need that much more to do that. So, we've talked and I've been, the mayor's been in those meetings as well, the borough mayor. And, and so, I mean, that, that's part of the housing solution that we've been working on, but it will just come slowly.
The borough distribution is problematic. I've seen it in Hope and Cooper Landing and other places and the lots wind up going for $110,000 or they're, because they go on a competitive auction.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the problem.
Unless there was another mechanism, going to DNR or something like that or going through HUD, you know, it's still, it may not solve the whole problem. But, even with that $110,000 lot, if you build a 16-plex on there and if it was federally subsidized, I think it still comes through the bank, even the federal subsidized loans. So, I mean, the synergy there, there is a possibility. Tim, you're a developer, what's going on?
Well, you know, you, I've been listening to you guys on the radio for the last half hour or so. You've touched on everything, all our problems a little bit mostly. And every, we're trying to deal with it separately. I think it is all connected. You know, like it or not, Seward has developed a reputation, not just in the last year or so. My business went out of business because of the city. I'd been in business 15 years, they forced me out of business. They didn't ask me why or anything about the last 15 years, just started imposing penalties. So, you know, Seward's got a reputation as a difficult place to do business right down the line. And it goes back to a house divided. We're, you know, we should be one city to mile eight. We need to reform our government system. We need to go from a volunteer government to a hard government. And, you know, we're not ready for the answers. What if, what if we had a war with Russia and Marlin and we had to do all these things we're talking about whether we wanted to or not? You know, I mean, I drive out to the dump out there and you could build a house in one day out of the lumber that gets thrown away in the dump. I'm talking sheets of plywood, I'm talking two-by-fours, I got pictures, I'll show them to you right now. And, I mean, you name it. I mean, there's whole couch sets that are brand-new out there.
Let's stay on a corrective path.
The point is, is we're not utilizing our resources. That's just a basic example. We could start a hardware store that serviced right out of that dump, swear to God, just.
So, that's an opportunity for a recycling business.
Sort it out, have some street people sort it out. It's just, the point is, we're not utilizing our resources efficiently. We're the richest, most spoiled nation in the world and now we're complaining because things are a little tough. We don't do anything right.
Okay, well, I hear your comments and I hear your, I hear you complaining about the problem.
No, I'm not complaining, I'm saying we need to reform. And he said it, I heard the whole thing in there. It's reform of government, reform of the way business and government react. I mean, Seward's a government/business oligarchy, you know? And it's a closed club. You need to change that.
I appreciate your comments, Tim. I've been to other places in Alaska and I cannot see that, I don't agree that Seward is the ogre of all those places.
I don't say it's ogre, I'm saying we all need to work together and reform our system.
I agree, agree.
It's not their fault, they're stuck in that system too.
Agreed, thank you, thank you.
Can I ask a question to Dwayne? I'm just kind of going back to the Toad, looking at coming to Seward and the concerns about the dock in Anchorage. Wasn't there supposed to be some work done on the docks in Seward? And what's the status with that?
Yeah, so currently, we're probably about a year out from doing an expansion of the freight dock and that's what would facilitate what Norm's been referring to. And we've got other shippers that can't really use our freight dock right now because it's not wide enough in certain areas for ramping that would be required. But, we're looking at extending the dock by another 400 feet, which would give us close to, you know, 1,000,000 year feet and we'll have, and we'll have more capacity. But, as I said, the start of that project, we're starting to, you know, take some aggregate on property for, for building. And we've got a $20 million federal grant, grant money. But, again, that's still a little ways out. And then, I guess, I'm sort of on a related topic. Tom was talking about, you know, bringing, you know, building materials into this port and we do, we do take Spinnard Builders Supply Materials monthly, like January, February, sometimes March.
Just moving through.
When there, yes. When there's a lot of ice in the Port of Anchorage, those regular barges are diverted to Seward and that product comes through our port. Spinnard Builder Supply, but of course, you know, Spinnard Builder Supply was here and for whatever reason decided not to keep their Seward store. So, yeah, there's, there's more to it than just having materials arrive.
It's, is the changing climate, I remember being in the inlet on the platforms and the ice crashing into the legs, it was pretty impressive. Does that still happen? Has the climate change of Maycock had a little bit more friendly?
You know, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that that is the case. And it just varies from, from winter to winter.
With Tom.
There's probably more water moving and that's all, you know, that's all fresh water from the drainage. Like, it's not sea ice, it's not.
There's a war motion out there.
Yeah, there's, it's not salt ice, you know, it's not like the Marion Sea or anything, it's freshwater ice, you know? It's a lot harder and like more vicious stuff, so.
But, still, in Seward's favor, sounds like. I think we all realize what a gem we've got here with Resurrection Bay. You know, my friend Willard often told me how important the Port of Seward was, well, to early Seward, it was the only, it was the reason. And when I hear about a few businesses, Wolf, there are a lot more than just catalysts and JAG here. And when I hear about a few businesses, Wolf, there are a lot more than just catalysts and JAG here. I mean, obviously.
Oh, no, forget it.
You know, and we are very diverse, and finding critical needs for each of those kinds of people. I mean, a construction worker doesn't need the same thing as somebody that's gonna work at the new hospital.
Like, if you look at the housing, if you look at the employee base for those industries, I mean, it's still a housing issue, no matter how you kind of.
So, Jason, where, how does planning and zoning, I know the zoning portion of the planning, how are they impacting this? I was thinking about it on the way to town, that there probably should be some, we have not had a joint session with planning and zoning for too long. But how are they dealing with this issue?
I think this last year, the, probably the biggest thing they did was short-term rental regulation and protecting single fam, uh, single-family homes from being rented in residential areas. You know, I think that that could go, you know, that could, that could still continue to be revised, but that was kind of, we know that is like a major pressure point on the housing, the short-term rentals. And so, when they proposed that regulation, the council, council did change that a little bit, but I think that that's something that we did, that was discussed about being reviewed.
Again.
Yeah, 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 being reviewed again, like, how are we, how are we doing? And I think that's, that's something that, that you guys could have, had, on that joint work session, have a discussion.
Well, I would like to talk to.
In regards to that, you know, and every year, Planning and Zoning Reviews, the Municipal Lands Plan, Inventory and Use Plan, so that has all the city lands in there. It's a pretty thick document. It's got a map for each, more or less like each section of land, and talks about the history, its, its current use, its, its future kind of recommendation use. And so that's another document that they review to look at all the, all the city lands on both sides of the, of the bay. And so that's, that would be a good resource to look at for, to just to understand kind of the, and it, it's available on the city website. You can look at, and there's two, I mean, it's a, yeah, it's a big, when you print it, it's like this thick, and so.
They're spending a lot of time with it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they, they spend a lot of time with it, and they're, and they're familiar with it every year. So that would be another resource that this commission could look at. And I'm gonna have to go in a few minutes here, 'cause I have a, a meeting to be on. But I do think if, if, you know, as, as Board Member Miller was talking, I, I think, you know, if we have, we've identified these pieces, we have stuff throwing through here. And then Ms. Paquette talked about, like, we need to get very specific, but I do think that's within kind of the, the, the power of this. I mean, you guys are the Port and Commerce Advisory Board, and if you guys were to say, hey, look, we've identified that we need like a lumber store, or supplies, or marine supply store, a combination thereof. Which I think that there's enough evidence from those conversations we had with that marine committee that was going on earlier. Then I think you can do an investigation of like, who could we go talk to about this? Is there land available that we could kind of create this package with? And that's something that you guys have the power to like propose to council and talk to council about, because they're ultimately the ones that have the power to create incentives around that. And so, but I do think if you guys, like, the, it's one of those, the, the situation is so big, and it's all these layers, but you kind of have to pick like an entry point and focus on that one thing. Because if you try and attack it all, at all these little points, it's, doesn't really work, but you have to like focus in. And so I do think like, I'm hearing enough around here, that you guys could work towards a recommendation of what you need, companies that you could go look at, talking to, and find a like potential space for it. Figure out the incentives and go in that, in that direction. At least you're, at least you are, I mean, and that's, anyway, I, in my, in my opinion, that's where I think you could take the most ground on that, so.
I think your opinion's well, well taken.
I just wanna say two things before you leave, because part of it applies to you. I think it's important to acknowledge where we've made progress.
Yes.
And the reason that the city's having conversations with the borough about land is because we did the employee retention inquisition a year and a half or so ago. And that's where those conversations first started. Stephen reached out to the mayor, and those conversations started. So we are making progress in that. And then the other thing is the, the increase in marine services, I see as a direct correlation to the brochure product that the Chamber came out with when you were still the executive director. So I just want to acknowledge that the marine industry has grown over time, and it's, I think, directly result of the documentation that you created to market it.
I think, I think it's partly also to like NOR.
Yeah.
NOR does a lot of work, and we have JAG over there now. So we do have a lot of things that are coming together that our marine services.
Right, right. And I think the Chamber played a big part in, in, in making that happen. So I just wanted to give those kudos.
And we do have freight coming across our dock at Smick. I mean, 'cause, you know, he's busy, he's got dock, and they come over to our dock. They offload. Tony can let you, our yard is full over there right now of stuff to cross the dock. And we got stuff coming and going. We got dirt going out, you know, stuff like that. So it's, it's happening. It's just, like you said, we need to find something and start with that. And I think like the Chamber has that thing for small businesses to go start. I think that word needs to get out more. 'Cause I remember when the council voted on that a while back about adding that, you know, that one position, it kind of went away, and they made that money go to that.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's the thing, they need to push that for small business starters, so.
And can I just make a quick comment on that? That is a joint partnership between the Chamber, the City of Seward, and Sam, who's the other, the third, can I, or Small Business Development Center. That was a three-year contract that will be coming up for rediscussion in the next year or two. So I would encourage everybody to support that renewal when it does come up.
I would agree with Linda. I think we certainly want to acknowledge all the great things, or the good things that people have done and the efforts that people are making. It's, it's, nothing is gonna be accomplished if we don't try, and we've been trying. And I think we've now identified three or four pages of issues that people have identified. A lot of it's redundant, same thing. But attacking them like Jason and Norm just said, thank you, Jason, one at a time, or the priorities, I think that's really what we need to do. We can't do them all. You know, the childcare, I wish there was a magic wand, but that not only takes a facility, it takes the magic person.
And there is a company working on that, so that's, that's a start. I mean, they are getting homes, but just not enough of them.
And, and the parents of those children need a place to be able to take their kids to, to enjoy. There, there are recreation facilities here in town, outdoor recreation facilities. And Avtech for sure does some good things. But, you know, there are other improvements that people would, would like to see, and we can take those on one at a time as they come. The, the, over and over, this lumber store has come up today. Lumber store, hardware access, do it, we're a do-it-yourselfer nation. And Mark fortunately has stepped up. There's a lot of stuff in his store, not everything. And Becky is doing stuff there, and I think there's a couple of other one-offs. I mean, I, I have a small plumbing shop in my shop, but that's only for moose pass people. It's actually not even a store. It's a borrow one, return it. But there are things that we can do as a board. I think we've opened the door here a little bit. You know, everybody, I appreciate everybody coming and offering stuff here. And I don't mean to suggest that we have the answer yet. I do think this housing thing is something that's not that far away from solution. Wolf mentioned it's a national problem. Seward has always been a counterpoint, or ahead of the point, or however. You know, we've always found solutions, 'cause we've had to. You know, there was no other country in the, in, no, no other city in the country that had an earthquake like, like we did, that we recovered from. So, I mean, it's certainly within our ability to do these things. But identifying them so they don't become impossible, you know.
It takes some creative thinking, isn't it?
I, I, as much as it pains me to say so, I think federal spending is a part of this. And I think the Housing and Urban Development financing, the, the bank has been more than open, but there's, there's a, there's still a limit to what they're going to go with private financing. And where H U D will go to a little bit worse business model than the bank will.
Well, the banks will partner with a lot of those organizations, HUD, ADA for commercial loans, you know, Alaska Housing Finance Corporation. There's a lot of partnerships available out there. You just need people, people willing to do it.
When I did look at this before, I talked to Larry Herman, who's, who's booking a year out now, and at least, and Andre Spinell, who has a tied interest, a real interest here in town. He owns property, he's got a boat here. He, he'd be happy to build here, but his company wants to go where they can make money. So they're not going to do any, and surprisingly, multiple occupancy houses cost almost as much per square foot as single-family homes. That's surprising to me. But with a little bit of impetus, a little bit of a nudge from our senators or whoever to get FHA to, to help, might be what we need, the city identifying land or the borough identifying land. I, I, I feel very strongly about the housing thing being a linchpin in this. Quality of life is certainly important, but.
Linda?
It might also be helpful to, to be a little creative in our thinking about housing. I've been watching occasionally a show called Something About Container Homes. But people are using containers now to build housing out of, and it's actually cheaper than, than doing a whole frame-stick building. And, and shipping containers are rather plentiful, and so I, you know.
They're a blight.
They're not, they're not.
Mr. Barson is building crew housing. He'd build a bunch for the fisheries across. He'd build a bunch for Seward Fish to, to house their employees, so it's there.
Yeah, I, I bought them. I've hauled them out to the bush. I've used them in a bush. I've lived in them. But there's an upper, higher grade of that beyond Conex. Conexes are only eight feet wide. But if you remember the, the, it's called Lake Shore Hotel now in Anchorage, was built out of modules. And I talked to somebody recently about this concept. We're in the harbor. We can easily ship in twelve-foot-wide modules. I, I'd rather see them stick-built by, by people here in Alaska, but there are opportunities.
It's the new Avtech building. The Avtech was built modular, the new Avtech housing.
Oh, that's right. They were, they were, the newest housing. So there are, there are creative things that can be looked at. It starts, it starts with somebody who's willing to do it, and it's gonna be based on profit. We're not talking about, you know, government housing here. So, showing someone, reaching them, showing them there's an opportunity to make money. I don't have any problem in talking to Hollis Custom Builders, or Spinell, or, or anybody else, you know, if, if there was a real plan. Say, here's, we talked about the links, and this, this board could talk about that some more and identify that outline. Wolf?
So I was asking, so I'm wondering if you could continue this conversation in Planning and Zoning, because, you know, it's like have a little bit of a.
Well, I, I think so. I, I, I will work towards trying to get a, a joint meeting with Planning and Zoning. We've talked about it for over a year, and the last time we had a planned meeting, something came up.
Well, there's a dimension.
COVID again?
Is there any way to get like Alaska and Borough, like, economic development? I don't know what the boards are, but, you know, you got Becky who wants to sell wood next to, like, what Tim was saying, you know, the things we already have, like the City Express or whatever it was, lot with a warehouse right there. And like, you've got all these things right next to each other, and, you know, like, last time, we were talking about all the mini parts they wanted to put in, because when you come into town, that's the first impression everybody has. So, you know, cleaning up City Express with somebody who wants to sell lumber with a port that has like all the lumber coming through it, you know, getting, there is money to be made. And there are the pieces right there, but you do have to connect the dots and like give somebody more than a, just a nudge, just be like, hey, look at this. This is a no-brainer for somebody like Lowe's or whatever, you know.
Oh, my God, box stores. Tim?
I, I think Wolf was on something, which I didn't explain very well earlier, but it's kind of a, we got, there's so many hodgepodge of regulations between the municipal, the borough, the state, the feds, various other agencies. Everything needs to be streamlined, you know. We're, we're getting away from common sense in the way we live, you know, whether it's business, lumber, whatever. And I think that's a lot of it. And the other thing is, like, a seven percent sales tax. Well, you know, everybody's got one. Anchorage doesn't have one. That's why they're the supply capital of Alaska, you know, or it's a good proportion of them. But seven percent on top of something like groceries, they say those guys only make an average, you know, groceries is a bad example, because a lot of them are exempt. But, you know, a lot of businesses depend on less than a ten percent on their gross per profit. So that seven percent is a lot. And, you know, the city's responsible for four percent of it. So, I mean, just knocking it down from seven percent to five percent, you know, might just, you know, as part of, part of a broader overall campaign to streamline and make it more business-friendly and builder-friendly, et cetera. Some things like that are, are what it is. But we need a whole streamlining of the process.
And that's, that's the degree of getting into that is why Planning and Zoning, I think, is a good.
Well, sales tax is a tough, tough, touchy issue, 'cause if, if you take away sales tax, you're gonna have to look at a revenue stream from some other source for city services, that you want the streets plowed, et cetera, so.
So if you, so if you look at the concept, and so we're living here, living in a paradigm with this housing situation. We have housing here that doesn't pay tax. And it's basically.
Well, sure, it does pay property tax.
No, no, these, these apartments up here, these low-cost housing units, they don't pay property tax. And they are basically run-like businesses. Their, their employees get paid. So, you know, so that's already being done. Why can't it be done for people who are disincentivized from working because of the income structure required to get into those units? It's another conversation, it's not a pat-cha thing.
Well, if there are exempt properties around, I'd be interested in knowing what they are and what's justification. I, I didn't realize that was the case.
I think it's very modern apartments and then Bayside.
Bayside. So those are the H U D.
Seward has the highest, Seward has the highest ratio of low-cost housing.
In the state.
Really?
Per capita. Per sit-wise.
We need to go to the directors also.
Yep. I, I can make a comment to that, just for an employee of mine who was trying to get into an apartment. And, and it is true that we do have a lot of income-based apartments available in Seward. And this is a frontline employee who's at the bottom of the pay scale at, at my institution, who did not qualify for an apartment because she makes too much money. So her and her son are looking for, instead of getting into an apartment that she could afford, had to find a place that's outside of her income bracket and find a roommate. So it is an issue. I mean, low-income housing is, is very important to every community, but what we're missing, in my opinion, is the gap between low-income housing and what we now have as just basically, you know, housing that no one can afford unless they've already got it. But, yeah, so she.
Something in the middle.
Yeah, and she was very devastated. And I went through that even, even twenty years ago, when I was building my family or starting my family and looking for housing, or I guess it's been longer than that. But I had the same issue, you know. I, I made too much money even then as a teller at a bank to get into low-income housing. So there's a point to that. I, I will agree with that.
There is a gap.
Question, maybe Norm can answer. What, what sort of incentives can the city do to encourage year-round occupancy? For like the snowboard bird and the.
Yeah, so they did, they did add, well, for people that were leaving, they did raise the price to turn on, turn off, which helped do some things. But except for whatever council wants to allow, I know they stopped subsidizing some of these major businesses, because they were subsidizing for a long time. And now they're not. So if you can start it again, I mean, yeah, start a business, maybe for a year, but it'd be up to council to do. And that'd be something that can probably come through, maybe Planning and Zoning, have that meeting about it. What can the city do to help, you know, these folks get started?
Or stay in business.
So the borough, so the borough, the city already have it. It's not viewed this way necessarily, but they already have it incentive to live in your house. You have your property tax, and then you get an exemption. So raise your property taxes and increase the exemption.
Bingo. The city of, the city of Seward gives a hundred and fifty thousand exemption. The first hundred and fifty, you don't have to pay taxes on if you're over sixty-five. Outside the city, the borough gives three hundred thousand for senior citizens.
Really?
Yes. That's just the start.
Well, the city has a hundred and fifty.
Yes.
Two hundred and fifty.
As opposed to the general borough, it's three hundred.
I believe the city's two hundred and fifty.
It's a hundred and fifty. I was just on the phone with him.
Okay.
Two fifty?
Yeah.
That's what I thought it was.
Okay, so it's closer.
I think, I might got it wrong, but I was just on the phone with him and double-verified it, because I wanted to make sure I didn't miss it out.
So you would just as soon piss everybody off from here to Homer?
Huh?
You're talking about raising the borough?
No.
Or just the city tax?
Yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting that the city raise their.
Yeah, I'm suggesting that the city raise their exemption for people that live here year-round. Right now, it's $50,000 for everybody. So I jumped from senior citizens I was talking about before. Now we're moving on to, so we do different than the borough with the senior citizen exemption. Why don't we do different with the year-round exemption? If you are here year-round, you get the $150,000 exemption that senior citizens now get, and you bump up the senior citizen one to $300,000.
That sounds good, but I think there's a problem with.
Oh, there probably is, yeah. I just, just for example, I mean, tweak that number around a bit and stuff.
You're going to tell me that I have to do something?
Huh?
You're going to tell me that I have to?
No.
Another thing with that, though, is that a few thousand dollars isn't going to make a difference for most of these people. That's so far below the decimal point, that's not going to drive the decision.
But it goes in with the fabric of improvements to try to show collaborative.
It does help big time on your property taxes, though.
Wolf and Tim were both talking about making Seward more attractive to people.
Yeah, to live year-round.
Tim?
Well, Seward's already attractive to people, not, just not the people that live here. But it is a real problem. Some years back, when I ran for office, I checked the thing, and at that time, over 50% of the houses in Seward proper were owned by people that didn't live here. So, you know, it's a people problem.
Well, I'm one of those. I live in Moose Pass, and I own four houses here.
Well, I hate to keep repeating myself.
That's not what you mean, though, I don't think. I think you mean people that aren't living here.
It's a case of the old saying of a house divided. We're a house divided, and it doesn't matter whether you like it or not. It doesn't matter if anybody's going to do anything about it or not. It's a fact. We are a house divided. People can't vote. They don't have proper representation. People that have lived here all their lives, and they may not want it. It doesn't make any difference how anybody feels about it or whatever you look at it. It's facts, cold, hard facts. And we get 350 people vote because nobody cares, you know. So we've got a severe morale problem in Seward.
Well, it won't be helped by letting everybody know that we have a severe morale problem, frankly.
Can I?
Yeah, Becky and Melissa.
One thing, two things that are right in line with PACAB and with what we're talking about is we no longer have the trustee trustee. We have no state fairy coming into town. And there, once a year or so, they advertise for Coast Guard towns to where you're a registered Coast Guard town, and you qualify for all these benefits. I tried to turn in the application or get somebody from the city admin to, and no interest, none. And, but I really think that the state fairy, it would be nice to see what we could do to get them back and the Coast Guard.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's why I did that, because you're here.
Just a minute, Tim, just a minute, just a minute.
So last year, remember, you know, because of the new clinic going in, it's houses, you know, for the villagers around Prince William Sound, Representative Stutes is working on getting the testimony to coming back to Seward.
Really?
Yes, she is. So that's on her thing, and that she's really pushing that to get it back because of that, because you can stop at Chanega, you know, everything on, bring folks over, and that's a big thing with the airport.
Where would they go?
Huh?
Where would they go? The railroad dock?
Yeah, like they did before, but probably it won't be at the dock, it'll probably be at the other place. But she's working on trying to get them back coming to Seward because of that. And then, so that's.
Okay, cool. Melissa and Tim.
Well, I was just going to say, I feel like we're kind of getting off topic with some of the conversation that was going on, and we are running pretty long, so.
Yeah, well, we need to move it along a little bit. Well, we do go to two, if we can finish quicker than that, we will, but we'll try to keep on topic. Go ahead, Tim.
Well, cruise ships, if you really want to solve the housing prices overnight, Park went over on the mud flats over there, and we got another 6,000 beds.
Well, we don't own a cruise ship, so.
You gotta laugh, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, they did the Queen Mary in Longview, or Longb-.
Long Beach.
Long Beach.
The Newlands have 10,000 beds. The Newt 1200 Coopers have 10,000 beds.
It's a thought. It's a thought. Okay.
It's not a good thought, it's a joke.
Okay. So I think that what Samantha has given us is something that we all could spend a little bit of time with and take a look at, and we can continue the conversation. I think we have a couple issues to focus on, and I think thanks to Jason and Norm, they've helped us realize that we have, we have a housing issue, of course, but we have something that we can actually work with Planning and Zoning about, and that is how to get over that hump. So I will reach out to Planning and Zoning and through the clerk, well, with the clerk, and try to schedule a meeting. I think it actually goes through the manager, doesn't it, to arrange that?
Yeah, we can work on that and put out some feelers, see.
Okay, feelers, yeah. Other than that, I bring it around for discussion and closing comments.
I want to do a quick survey.
I just had a quick thing, guys. So we have a product here that the chamber has come up with. I think maybe coming up with a more, a proactive risk assessment, soliciting like tariffs outgoing from the Sea Life Center, what the issues are there. So we're talking a lot about things that have happened, like SPS leading town. And maybe by ranking or listing the different enterprises that are here in the community, like the Sea Life Center, Stewart Fisheries, Safeway, Alaska Marketplace, all the things that we count on to be there, and then going to them and saying, could you complete a questionnaire? Do you have some issues, you know? And then trying to get ahead of trouble spots before, you know, before they're gone.
Good point. I'll come back to that, my comments. Anybody else in the audience?
Yeah, I was trying to do a quick thank you for Jason before he left. It is almost like having a meeting with Planning and Zoning when he's here, because he was Mr. Planning and Zoning. So that's really handy to have him at the meetings and our new manager, Kat, because she was the chamber, so. So it's like we have them right there during all the council meetings and all the meetings. So that's really, really cool to have them there. And we are planning to have another town hall meeting in spring, and this will be one of the subjects.
Well, we also have Tony and Norm here tonight.
Yes, so that was extremely handy.
All right, so let's go around the table here. Tom?
I don't have any comments. I, you know, I don't know if like a lot of this stuff is just the ebb and flow of how it works. I mean, I lived in Seattle in the 90s, and nobody ever wanted to go to Tacoma. It was like a barren, like, place that you didn't go. And now Tacoma had a renaissance, and Detroit's having a renaissance, and all these places that like became ghost towns are having this renaissance because there are these businesses moving out and buildings moving out. You know, how do you spark that? How do you use that? And like Tim was saying, like, don't, you know, if there's a lot of stuff being thrown away, a lot of buildings being emptied, like, let's work on filling them first, you know, stuff like that. But yeah, I think it is a lot of lobbying. It is a lot of like somebody going there and incentivizing, being like, hey, we'll knock the taxes back or utilities back or whatever for a certain amount of time until they get you on your feet. And finding the people that are already here that want to grow and stuff like that. So I think it's all well and good, but I just wonder how much of it's going to almost solve itself a little bit, you know?
Very little.
A vacuum.
There is an ebb and flow, but, yeah. Melissa?
Well, I just want to, first of all, thank you, Sam, for putting out this survey. I think there's a lot of great, great information here to go on. I'd like, I think there's some good information in here on some additional or more elaborative questions that could be asked. I really like Wolf's suggestion of surveying the existing businesses to find out what their struggles are, because that is a very good point. A lot of great conversation here today. And like I said earlier, I think it's something that we could all discuss until we're blue in the face and probably never come up with a solution, but I think getting that conversation going and those minds thinking, that's really the only thing we can do to get started. So I just want to thank PACAB for bringing this discussion in, and yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing how we can make things better.
Thank you. Dwayne?
Yeah, a lot of good thoughts and ideas tossed around today, and it's good to just have a group kind of, you know, put their heads together and really start to think about some of these things. I think we could, and Wolf's already mentioned this benefit, from some business representation. And as was pointed out, businesses to some degree can take care of some of the issues for at least their labor pool. And, you know, that's, that's an approach, something to, something to think about. I think we really benefit from more economic diversity here than other communities, and some of the pains we're experiencing are a result of having a place that, you know, people want to be at and live in, you know. But we can facilitate, you know, better, you know, better lives for the people who do, you know, choose to work here. And I think if, you know, not to oversimplify, but, you know, if we think about what families need, you know, it's like, that's what we need to work on. And anyway, it's been a good conversation. Thanks.
Ben?
Yeah, thank you for, thanks for the chamber for getting this together in a short order, too. That was impressive. The, kind of the role of government as I see it here is to create the environment in which these businesses would want to be here. So it's not a matter of, you know, maybe we could do some targeted studies to find out if there's a market for a lumberyard or something like that. But really, we need to have that community set up so that the employees, the lumberyard's going to need, or whatever business can come here and buy food and find some place to have their kids watch. That's, that's a thing. If we can incentivize the tax structure to keep people here in town, there's a lot of focus on growth, which is not a bad thing, but I think it's been brought up in the board before, that growth is kind of like, you know, we have to keep it kind of tempered because it can end up pricing us out of our own community.
So there's a young group of kids coming in, she's going to bring them in to sit at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, that's okay. Yep. Come on, youngsters. They're not that young.
Was it young?
Wow. Okay. Ben, you're still at the fore.
My closing comments here, so. Yeah, I guess basically that's where, in this board's capacity, what we can do is identify these issues, involve planning and zoning, these are really good steps, and then bringing in, it'll be, it'll be good to solicit some more comments from some local businesses, and maybe I can speak on my business's behalf there. But other than that, yeah, it was a really good discussion, so thank you.
Linda?
Thank you to everybody that came. Welcome to the new attendees. This, I think this was a good meeting. I think it was a really good discussion. I am curious, Samantha, if you could send that survey out to, through the clerk, to the clerk's distribution list? Because I don't know that it got, I mean, 23 responses is great, but I think more responses would be better. And I think that distribution list that the clerk has is a very valuable broadcast. So I don't know, it's, I'm just suggesting it. I don't know how much of these discussions are lobbyists, the Seward city, city Seward lobbyists are aware, but maybe they could be included so they're understanding what some of the real struggles are in town. I want to talk for a minute about Tim's, we're a house divided. Back in 2018, before COVID, we visited this topic as a community because from mile minus three all the way out to eight is really what constitutes the Seward community. And at the time, a committee was formed, and we didn't get very far. But I'd like to just throw the idea back out there that there could be some form of board or committee that was formed with the city's approval and desire that could include that whole geographic area, could give representation. Maybe they're just an advisory board, but some way to bridge this division that people feel. Because I'm aware of people feeling very left out of city politics, not having a voice, being frustrated, not knowing how or when things will change. And I think if we had some way, I don't know if it's a service area board, I don't know if it's an advisory board, but I would really encourage the city to think about some way to address this division, because it keeps coming up. And nobody wants to use the A word that ends in an X. I don't think that's the solution, and I'm not sure that the city has the funds required to do that kind of a move. And I don't think that's the answer. I think there's some middle ground there where we could, we could become a more united community with the ins and the outs. Thank you.
Okay. Just a minute, Tim, I am going to recognize you just for a real quick minute because you did have the opportunity during community discussion.
Don't worry about it, I already said what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I will remind some, well, I won't, I will bring up the fact that, I don't know if it was 2018, and I don't see COVID as a, it was a milestone, but it didn't end everything. Things continued. We continued in this community with a lot of activities where other communities shut I, as, at one time was a chair, and we did have an ambitious program to look at housing. I did solicit comments from Tara, Kathy, Kathy LaCombe at the Avtech, and Tara Reimer at the Sea Life Center, and others here in town about what their needs were, what they, what they thought. We had some presentations from some of them. We had realtors who were able to provide us some insight, and we had a fairly ambitious schedule. Now, for whatever reason, that did, there was somewhat of a change of command and some fluctuations here in town, and it did go dormant. There were other things that were moving along in parallel. It wasn't like the whole topic was ignored, but planning, zoning in the city and the council and administration did continue to some degree with this. I think it's time to revisit it because it still is a serious topic. And I don't think we need another board. I think we have the opportunity right here. You know, you and I are outside of the city already.
Tom.
And Tom are outside, quite a few of us. I think, you know, we do have an opportunity to represent a broad community, and it's one of the reasons PACAB is so, I think, beneficial to the community, because we can bring in, I think wisely, our city founders saw that this was a larger community than just within the city limits, and they provided this opportunity to us. One of the things we've talked about is how to overcome some of these problems, and, you know, and I think many of us are in business one way or another, and I think most of us realize that companies do things based on profits to a great degree. So one of the big things that we need to do in all of our discussions is make sure that, we talk about incentives, the greatest incentive is where can you make money? If there are obstacles to that, maybe that's something that we can challenge or attack, but, you know, finding a way for businesses to be profitable, I think, is the key. If there are burdens or regulatory or financial or community feelings, I think we can deal with all that with a good, strong, positive approach and teamwork. What we're doing is tilling the ground. You know, we're not going to, we're not going to do anything without a lot of effort, fertilizer and seed, and the guy that makes the tractor or the hoe or whatever, but we're going to till the ground. And from that, I think we can see something go. That's what we have done always in this town, is we've started something, and this is the folks who will benefit from it. Who are you people?
We're from Seward High School.
My goodness. Are you? My goodness. Are you juniors, seniors, a mix?
Juniors and seniors.
And you all take civics and things like that? Good, well, welcome.
Yeah, and they're in AP government.
Our manager probably told you what we're doing here? This is a work session, which is not our regular session. This is a kind of a back-and-forth discussion to find, have an opportunity to try and find and solve problems. And we only do it with input. So having you guys listen and realizing that you can participate in government, that's my job as a chair. I'm not the smartest bulb in the box, but if I get all people to put their thoughts into this box, we'll come up with something better. So along with that, tilling the ground, public views, I don't have anything else. I appreciate every, Norm for the city.
So I just want to touch on a few things that were talked about earlier. So the Coast Guard's going to be buying their own housing for the houses for the new FRC. And so probably a lot of you don't know, but there's a lot of housing going in, not just up on the hill. There's a lot going on across the bay. They're going to do employee housing for JAG. And then there's also people, we have a meeting coming up here with P&amp;Z, which is, be good you guys have a meeting with P&amp;Z, about more housing across the bay. So the housing issue is being addressed, it's not fast, but it is being addressed. So that's one of the things we talked about today. We have a lot more housing coming. I don't know if it's affordable housing or what, but just, there is more housing coming.
You're not talking about the bench?
No, not the bench at all. So anyways, I just wanted to touch on those things. And the lobbyists, Linda, the lobbyists work with us on mostly this housing, infrastructure support, things, you know, like what we've got for fixing the underground piping on 7th Avenue, or Belane, sorry, I always call it 7th. But anyways, for things like that. But our lobbyists are working hard for us and getting us, and we're getting, constantly getting things, about grants coming out, and how the city can apply for these to help with all the infrastructure things going on. But I know that we're also working with us on the childcare issue the state is. So I know we were working on that last year with them, so.
I'm going to step out early just a little bit here, because we did have a group come in. But are there any questions from anybody out there? Or comments? Don't, don't, nobody's going to put you on the spot. Here's, he's gonna lead, he's gonna lead right here, our oldest kid.
I would like an informal paper from the city regarding the planned new tunnel through the mountain for the diversion tunnel from the waterfall.
That's the Corps of Engineers.
Right, yeah, but it's on city land and affects the city. And it's reported to be a $223 million project.
So far.
I would like that because the simple reason is I compare that huge amount of money, and we've got a thing with, and we've already got a working tunnel, as far as I know, maybe it needs some maintenance. But that kind of money, you could build a 24-foot pipeline from the Sea Life Center out to Lowell Point.
Okay, okay, that's-
Let me finish. I've got more time to comment. No, seriously, for $200 million bucks, you could put a 24-foot pipe, a double-lane road for that mile and a half.
Let's keep this on the topic of this work session, Tim.
That's what it is, improvements. So I'm just saying, that's why I'd like to see a paper that why that money's being spent and how it's being spent.
There is a teenager wearing a Santa hat with his hand up.
We'll see if we can find it. Okay. Kat?
I think we had a comment from one of the high school students that said a question. You mentioned earlier in regards to people to represent the greater community and so many citizens, there's always something called a PACAB or?
It's a PACAB, so that's this meeting.
Port and Commerce Advisory Board. We are an advisory board, unlike Planning and Zoning Commission, which passes actual legislation that's approved by the city council. We are a board that advises the city council.
Is this, do you use, do all the people use this room?
Yes.
So you have to reset up those nameplates, everybody?
That's not Jason, that is Norm Regis. He's sat in row chair.
I do.
Do you guys have anything you would like to see in like industry or businesses and services?
Anything you want to do that you don't see available in Seward?
Underwater homes.
Like activities?
Let me preface that, Kat, if I could. The skateboard park, both downtown and the BMX course were, both came through this board. They weren't the result of this board, but we did have input on them. So are there other things? It's okay. If you think about them, paper and pencil or computer to the clerk, and we would take them up.
For the person asking about the nameplates. So what you can't see is on the back here, like right in front of me, for each person who sits in this chair on each different commission. So this, in this chair is usually the vice mayor, and their name is there. And then underneath that is the planning and zoning and their name, and then PACAB and my last name, and then HP Vice Chair and that person's name. So when the person's putting the names in, they just have to check these cheat sheets here, because it tells everybody where to sit. And you can't see that, but I just thought I'd share it since you were asking about the nameplates.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, well, we will adjourn at 1:54, and thank you all for coming.
And thank you, guys. What a great group of people.